Well, completing with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Making the roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
President?
Mrs. Eckert?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bobo?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Do we have Holly?
Yeah, I can't hear Carolyn, but I'm here.
Okay. We'll move on to election of a temporary president. We have nominations.
I have a nomination for board president of Holly Arnold.
Temporary, temporary president.
Temporary president?
Yes.
Bill Fabola, do you want to do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Any further nominations for temporary president? Okay, nominations are closed. Motion to appoint temporary president, Bill Fabola. Roll call, please. Oh, they have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Andrew Fabola.
Paula.
Me.
Uh, Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, buddy, give me that gavel.
You want to... I want to pass my agenda now?
Dictator day one?
So, uh, we're going to talk about the election of the president. Do I have nominations for president?
I have a nomination for Holly Arnold as president.
Second.
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry.
We got one nomination for Holly Arnold. Are there any further nominations?
No.
Hearing none, I'm going to declare the nomination closed for president. I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint Holly Arnold as president.
Motion to appoint Holly Arnold as president?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Holly Arnold and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Congratulations, Holly. I will continue...
Thank you, everybody.
What's that?
She said thank you.
Oh.
I, I just said thank you. Thank you for the vote of confidence.
Okay, I'm going to look for nominations for the vice president.
I'll make a nomination for Phil Farr for vice president.
Any further nominations for the vice presidency? Hearing none, I'm going to declare that the nominations are closed for vice president. I'm now looking for a motion to appoint Phil Farr as vice president.
Motion to approve Phil Farr as vice president?
Second.
We have a motion for Phil being vice president with a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
And now, this is the second time I've been temporary, I'm going to turn it over to Holly Arnold. The meeting, uh, thanks, Holly. Congratulations to Phil and Holly.
Thank you, and because I'm here virtually, I'm actually going to ask that Phil continue, um, as the vice president, uh, role of leading the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Okay, established meeting dates and times for 2025. We have a list of proposed meeting dates and times. I did notice, uh, two of the months, the second Thursday, whether the third Thursday. Was there a particular reason for that, Paul?
I'm sorry, they, most of them are the third Thursday that we typically do. The exception to that is...
April, August?
Uh, April is the exception. That's because of the Easter, uh, break.
Okay.
And the October one, that's always the conflict typically with the bonfire.
Okay, in August, the second Thursday as well.
Uh, in August, that was because I wanted to make sure that, or recommend that we have a board meeting prior to getting back into school in case we had to hire.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions about the meeting dates proposed? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept those?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, the next item of business is committee assignments. Uh, typically, I, in the past, have always deferred that until later, and I'll, perhaps we should have let, uh, Holly defer that until another time, and she can let us know.
Yeah, I'll, um, if anybody has any changes they would request, I would be happy to hear them, um, and we can make an official appointment at the January meeting.
Okay. The motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Reorganization meeting is adjourned. And we will open the business meeting. Oh, can I read this again? I don't think so either. And we did a roll call. Should be good. Uh, superintendent's remarks.
Absolutely. I'm never going to pass up an opportunity to speak. Thank you. Good evening, board. Good evening, Tiger community. Uh, just a few minutes ago, or just a moment ago, we completed our annual board reorganization meeting. I'd like to thank our school directors for their ongoing service to our community. I know it's not easy to serve in an elected position, and quite honestly, you make it look easy. I'm thankful to work with such a dynamic, student-centered team, so, uh, congratulations. Our winter sports season, we are in full swing. I have visited lots of practices over the last couple of weeks. Our student athletes and our coaches, you know, they've been working very hard at their craft, and I encourage our community to come out and support our basketball players, our wrestlers, and our swimmers this winter. And, uh, let me say this, and I just mentioned this. Our esports, esports, our, uh, team is on fire. Just today, they were playing for the opportunity to advance to the state championship. That didn't go our way, but they advanced a long way, and they're, they're very, very competitive. And our team has been very successful over the last couple of years, and, uh, I'm sure we wish them all continued success. And having an esports team is just another example of the many, many opportunities available to our students. This weekend, our friend and neighbor, the Tuncanic Public Library, will present their annual Christmas show. The show will take place right down the street at our intermediate center. This year's show is titled Holiday Road, and will take place on Saturday at seven and Sunday at three o'clock. Local singers, dancers, and musicians will be highlighted. Tickets are available to purchase at the library or at the door, but all the proceeds go directly to the library, and that's certainly a great cause. Uh, Tuncanic's annual Christmas in our hometown is quickly approaching. That'll take place Friday evening, December thirteenth, and Saturday, December fourteenth. Our students, everybody knows our students participate in the tree lighting ceremony on that Friday at five thirty. And Christmas in our hometown is always an enjoyable, family-friendly event, so everyone, please consider bringing your family downtown to take part in the fun. We have so many, so many holiday concerts happening over the next two weeks, too many to even mention them here. So I'm encouraging all parents to check with their child's school for a listing of the upcoming holiday events. And in closing, I, I just, you know, I, I want, I think I speak for everyone when I say, I hope the crazy weather is done for the month. And I'm hoping there's no more delays or snow days before the Christmas break, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address the community.
Thank you. Look forward to the band concert on the tenth and the chorus concert on the seventeenth. Uh, I'd like to ex- indicate that we had a executive session prior to the meeting tonight, uh, to discuss some, uh, legal issues. For tonight's meeting, uh, public comments on agenda items only prior to the meeting. Uh, we're limited to four minutes of each. There'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting, uh, for public comments on anything else, and that's also limited to four minutes each. Enrollment are on pages four to five. Next, we have approval of minutes from November. Are there any public comments?
On agenda items?
On agenda items? On agenda items? There'll be an opportunity at the end for public comments on other items. Yeah, we have approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Uh, next superintendent's report.
Good evening again, board. I'd like to recommend a resolution be adopted approving the personnel report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Eupstehn?
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
And the second one, I'd like to recommend a resolution be adopted approving the conference attendance for, uh, one of our security guards, George Murphy, to get his basic SRO certification.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
I believe we have not had any committees meet. Unfinished business. Uh, item one is six-month review of motion to re-approve district's current health and safety plan with no changes.
That's correct. There is no changes. It's just mandated that we approve, uh, review and approve that every six months, but it's the same exact one that was approved six months ago.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, next we have items two A and two B.
I, if I may, just provide some information for the board. Uh, we had a, a very good discussion last meeting about the Act One index and the possibility of, uh, we know we have some large expenses coming, the possibility of getting an exemption above the Act One index. You know, we've done some research. Uh, we did present two options, but I'm confident that we would not qualify for an Act One exemption. So I just wanted to be upfront with the board before, uh, you contemplated action on either one of those. I just don't think we'll qualify this year.
Okay. Do we have a motion to...
So, so if I can just... So, so the reason with the last meeting, if I recall, we talked about the healthcare cost increase.
That's correct.
That is substantial. So, what we had talked about was looking at going outside the index, but healthcare, from what you've learned, uh, healthcare expenditure would not qualify for us going out of the...
Not, not when our special education costs have diminished and our P S R has diminished. Um, that's gonna basically, um, negate us from getting, uh, going above the Act One index if the board so, you know, chose to do that.
I believe that's what we tasked you with. That's why we tabled it.
That's correct.
So now you're coming back with the answer that we're not going to qualify to go outside the index.
That's correct. I mean, so you could, I mean, if you wanted to vote and approve two A, we would still apply for it, but I'm extremely confident we would be told no.
But if we go with two B, that's basically the...
Basically, if we go with two B, we're saying we won't raise above the Act One index, correct? Which I think is the, what we're going to be told to do by the state anyway.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion for two B?
Motion for two B and a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second for two B. Any discussion?
So if I can just clarify, so we're being very clear, that's to approve and adopt the resolution that we're not going to exceed the Act One index, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
So, if I, if I may, uh, but thank you for taking action on that. If I may, um, in, in just speaking down here, I think we need to make, um, a motion on two A to table it. Just so we took some kind of action on the resolution that was on the agenda.
Could we just make a motion to strike two A?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to strike two A.
Second.
Do we need roll call on that?
Vote on it.
Yeah, take a roll call, please.
We have motion and a second to strike two A. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. On the new business, we have, uh, right-to-know listings for your information, and as well, the, the E S S teacher substitute fill rate for your information as well. Uh, item three, motion to approve an out-of-state fieldship as listed. I see artistic support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that for, so is that the class?
Paul?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do we have, did we get a motion and a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Next item, motion, item four, motion to approve a three-year service agreement with Life Touch. Uh, for student fall, student fall photos.
And, uh, this is the same provider or the same contractor we use now. We don't pay for this. In fact, they, we get money back from this. But the money that Life Touch does provide us, we use for student scholarships for our seniors.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item five, motion to approve an agreement between, uh, the Tuncanic School District and Tuncanic Public Library for use of facilities.
Basically, we use theirs for none and they'll use ours for none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item six, motion to approve a budget transfer in special education.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item seven, motion to accept a donation of an air hockey table, basketball game, LED lighting, carpet, and foosball game table from Kate Crispin to the intermediate center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Where, what, is this for the, what's this for, Paul, or...
We have, like, uh, at the intermediate center, there's, uh, like, a game room or rewards room where kids can earn their way in based on behaviors or good things. And she was kind enough to donate those things to the, to the space. So it's like during, for instance, during lunch or during recess, if they had done something, they might be able to, you know, go in there.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
That's great.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Crispin for, for generosity in donating those to the school.
Motion eight, motion to approve donation of a thousand dollars by consolidated electrical distributors. Fund is to be used by the intermediate center to purchase food for families in need for Christmas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Fabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, proposal for Mormon County Tax Deductors Association to increase compensation. On page thirty-three. Do we have a motion on this?
So, is there, is there something, it says here that they were, it wasn't for eight years, Paul, or Chuck?
I'm gonna let Dr. Shupan address this, but yes, there hasn't been...
There hasn't been an increase for a while, yeah. Um, the rates are right on there that they're proposing. Yeah, it's been a long time since we've increased anything with them, so...
I mean, just to give, give us an idea, what are the old rates, I guess?
What is the total?
These are the new rates?
As they're proposing.
Yeah, we just need to know kind of like how much we're spending on that now versus what the new proposal is.
Yeah, well, if we have, get a motion and a second, we can have discussion on that. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussions, we, yeah, now we have discussion.
We'd be, oh, sorry, um, it'd be an additional fifteen thousand dollars with the new rates increase.
Say fifteen or fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
How much is the total? So like fifteen is the increase, what's on, on what total?
Um, it would be... Last year's total was forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one, so it'd be an additional fifteen thousand to that.
Sixty-one thousand.
So we're looking at around six, uh, sixteen one thousand.
That's a thirty percent raise.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of basis for this to know.
Yeah, you don't know these.
So, if I may, there was a little bit of background on this. I think it was the year I got onto the board, maybe like twenty fifteen was the last time they came in and said, hey, um, we haven't had a raise in like eight or ten or fifteen years or whatever on, on the tax collecting efforts. So, um, we granted that one, and then they haven't come to us again since then, but obviously, you know, inflation has happened over the last eight years or so, and the, um, it is an increase, but it's not, um... I believe that there was one piece of it where they were asking, we provide the envelopes, was, was that part of this proposal?
Um... There's an indication of six, fifty cents per one envelope on initial mailing per address. Uh, I, don't we provide the envelopes?
Yeah, total for the mailing, it's fifty cents, uh, would be five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, they're also asking for an increase in their stipend from sixty, uh, from fifty dollars to sixty dollars. That's minimal. Um, the stipend right now is fifty, six hundred and fifty dollars. If we increase it to sixty, it'd be seven hundred and eighty dollars on the stipend.
I think he's asking, like, did we, do we pay for the postage now? Is that what you were asking?
Yes.
You mean...
We, we pay for the envelopes and the postage, correct?
Like, we mail, and we...
Correct, yes.
So, we're paying that part, so the cost of postage doesn't, doesn't come into play here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the cost of the envelope shouldn't, you know...
Sorry.
They can, if, if they were to get to the point where they are providing the envelope, sure, like, whatever that price is, but at this point, we, we provide them, so I would say that that's a caveat here, that we're not paying for envelopes that we already paid for. But, um, the idea of an increase isn't outrageous.
Fifty cents would be for stuffing the envelope.[1738.33]
I mean, would you like us, I mean, my apologies, I think we should have had more information for you to make a decision, if you wanna table this, we could revisit this in January, and I could have the exact numbers, that's your decision, because I'm also questioning the envelope.
I could certainly put some, I have all the numbers, I could certainly put some together and send it out.
We'll just put it in the next board pack.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, motion, motion to table, right?
Yes.
Well.
So can we withdraw the motion and make it a motion to table?
Yeah, all you have to do is make, somebody can make a motion to table, and then that doesn't need to be seconded, you just vote on that.
Most, most of the table.
Second.
Okay, second. Roll call, the table? We roll call the table?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo? Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item ten, motion to approve applications for payment as listed, payment number eight, Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling, mechanical construction at the primary center, and application for payment number three to D and M Construction Unlimited for door and hardware replacement at the high school.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Are these the final payments for these projects?
No.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Shumpelstein.
So, of the four projects right now as it stands, the tennis courts are complete and fully paid, this is the last payment for the HVAC at the primary, there'll be one more to D and M for the doors, which will be a larger payment than that, we, we're working back and forth, I actually have the application for payment, but I couldn't get it on the board agenda because I got it too late, so it should, it should be around two hundred thousand left on that one, that'll finish that off, and then there'll be one more for Scranton Electric for the work at the high school that we're gonna do over the Christmas break and the kitchen hot water supply system, so, and then, then we'll be done.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, item eleven, motion to renew a one-year agreement with Vetecor Software for district's student information system at a cost of fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.